Where's Chief? Call meeting to order. Jerry, can I do a roll call?
Mayor Arnold.
Here.
Autumn Bedd.
Here.
Autumn Decker.
Here.
Autumn Hudson. Autumn Corbett.
Here.
Need to adopt the agenda, need a motion.
Who with that?
One second.
Second.
Any additions? Better get anything else that I'm talking about? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business, discuss Brookside Village HOA concerns. And Jerry, I guess you're gonna lead this one.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, appreciate it. Over the course of several years, it's been between some of the members of the HOA near Brookside and city staff and others, including county as such. The latest request was, as this is being built out, is the question of the private roads that's in the subdivision. The concern was that at one time, this was gonna be a very large subdivision and private roads would've been maintained by the homeowner association, but as the development went under and the property sold, a large part of the property sold off to the church and a couple others. Basically, Matt Burnett, builder or developer out of Springfield, so he bought some, and so the, so there was gonna be at least additional people helping to pay for the, you know, the infrastructure that's in there. So anyways, the bottom line is, they came to me and asked if there's a possibility that the city could accept those private roads, which are not all built out yet, and I gave you a map to kind of show you all three phases. First phase that was built out was Phase Two. The houses were facing inward, I mean, the garages were in the roadside and the front of the houses were facing outward. Then Phase One had to have some changes made to it, even though there was a little bit of infrastructure there, but not much. And so when Matt Burnett took a look at it, he was able to purchase the end of, where the cul- near the cul-de-sac, and he, there was supposed to be where the detention pond number three, there was supposed to be another duplex there, but because of the stormwater requirements that had changed, and our requirements for them was that they had, had to have additional stormwater, so he was not able to build out that. So he built two duplexes and was able to sell those out. At the time, we didn't realize it, but he, he did build those houses so that the garage and the front porch were facing inward towards the road. Well, Mr. Burnett was not, unable to buy the other two lots that are closer to the intersection there of the road, and he couldn't, was not, was not able to make an agreement with the, with the owners of that property, so Brad Edwards, another local builder, was able to work out an agreement with those owners, bought those, and he built those out, and he built those the same way that Matt did, where the garages and the front porch is facing in towards the road. Now, Matt had went in and put the curbs in and put the stormwater infrastructure in there, and all he hadn't done was top the road, so the, Brad Edwards, by understanding, along with the HOA together, was able to put the top coat of pavement on Phase One and the intersection there, and then he stopped. Phase Three has not been built out, it's been a while since I spoke with Matt Burnett about that, he said he still has intentions of building it at some point, but not there yet. And then the rest of the road going out towards the road to Wilkinson Road is, you know, it's, you could use definitely a top coat of paving on it, but that would be the HOA's responsibility. There was issues with this whole property, it's been challenging for the landowner or the homeowners there, as, as they seen this fall apart on them, certainly understand that. There was issues where the property management company was not paying the taxes for the common areas, which included the roads. The county, Robertson County defaulted on it, took it to sheriff's auction, and of course, nobody wanted to buy some roads in some areas for detention for a community, so no one bought it. But, so I had a meeting with the county assessor and the HOA, and I believe they worked, worked it out that they were able to get the property back into their name, and so they have it. As far as we go, there was a period of time from about 2010 to 2018, there was no taxes paid to the city, and we never recovered those, those funds, it was about $3,000, I just checked a little bit ago, that never was paid to the city. So, here we are with this, and I just wanted to kind of give you an update where we're, where we're at with it, and then homeowner association, obviously, they did send a letter, Mr. Richter did, with a lot of concerns that he would like to see changes that he would like to have done, as Phase Three would be built out. Phase Three was, was approved by the planning commission, so I don't, any other stipulations would, would have to be done by the planning commission on that, so that really would be outside of the board's reasoning, but I guess the bottom line for me is, kind of like when I came to you before about the, the commercial development of Walmart, where those roads were falling apart, and we were trying to figure out what to do there, and this board opted not to accept those roads, because that was a private, commercial business, and so that's all, I just was trying to look for some affirmation, maybe some comments from you, you may have some more history with it, that I'm not familiar with, somebody who's been here definitely longer than I have.
Is Phase One topped?
Phase One is topped, yes, sir.
Phase Two?
Phase Two is topped, yes, sir.
So everything is curb top?
Yes, sir.
Did I say it here?
No, so can you?
What difference would it be if we accepted this as public instead of private? What would the difference be from this and the other development if the road went in for our backs?
Yes, we checked, and I, and I know that we did some inspections, and I, I think we would be okay with the road as it is, unless Andy knows something different.
I would, I would prefer if we get to that, if we get to that point, I would prefer Isaiah go out and do a walkthrough of this on the curb end road.
Okay, we can do that, we can proof roll it as well, and, but technically, by ordinance, we're supposed to build private roads to city specs, so it should be built to our specifications, but again, we could double check that.
We only have two other places in the city like this, and one's being built right now, we're, we're trying to, we're following that, making sure that they build it to our city specs anyways, but...
Jerry, I suppose, in the nature of this development, they never took a bond out because it was gonna be private roads.
No, they took out a bond.
Did they take a bond?
We pulled it.
We took the bond.
We did, and we did some work in the detention and all that work, we actually spent more money than what the bond was, kind of like we're doing the Holly Tree now, and we did what we prepared we could, because it wasn't, you know, we weren't supposed to build out the whole subdivision, so we did, we took care of what was needed for that particular phase, they had us involved in that, that was probably a few years ago, and I think you'd be some information on that in fact.
You might understand they took a bond out for just that part that they've been developing?
Right.
Where the road's been okay.
Yeah.
So we never really got...
Right, and we never took a bond out for Phase One either, because, you know, Matt just went in there and built those, those homes, and to my knowledge, Seagus is here, I don't think, you know, we might've had less bond on that.
Could I correct something?
Tension pond, whatever roads came out.
Yep, so that's where we're at with that, sir.
Could I correct something on that?
What is it, Mr. Cooper?
There was a bond taken out for Phase One, and the city let it expire, whoever was codes of that, it was bonded for, and, you know, when it came up, it was there, I think it was maybe forty, sixty thousand dollars, and they just let it go.
We found the record of that, he's brought that up before, nothing to find any records of that with our finance department or our planning department.
Apparently, we have no record of that anywhere.
I was a consultant on the property, and, and so I know that this, and a, and a bond court. And he was even, and the city was notified that it was not come up by a lien holder, and still it wasn't...
No, issue was, issue was really is, the city's wanting to take over these roads.
Yeah, the issue here is, we want to take over these streets. And you guys are gonna make that decision. I understand we didn't do it in the Walmart development, this is a little bit different animal than Walmart.
Definitely, it's not commercial.
This is drug on for so long, that it, when you, when you, when you do things and want, and want to structure your development in such a fashion as this one was developed and structured, and whose liability is it, is it if the plan doesn't work? Do the citizens pay for these roads, or do, or do they, must they seek another entity to solve the financial problems? That's the real problem. Do our citizens need to pay for this, for this failure, failure in business? I'm not inclined to, I'd entertain some more conversation, but I'm not inclined to...
Next, I'm not sure when Phase Three is gonna be built, or if it will be built, I know it's been planned, and the planning commission's approved it, but right now, we really only have Phase One, Phase Two, and then the entryways, they're at least in health right now.
I think right here, in 2011, I stated that there's no guarantee that those two sections will be completed. Ten years ago. But I don't think we're putting down any funds for this, John.
How, how, how would that be?
They've, they've built the road.
Future puddles.
If we would have to maintain it from this point.
I see, so, so the question then...
We don't have a road to build.
Will, will we maintain it after they build it?
Right, right.
That's a, that's a different thing.
Yeah, Phase One and Phase Two is already built, paved, and curved.
If it's paved, if it's, if it's paved and turned over to us under specification, what difference would that be to what we make a regular subdivision?
That, that was my point earlier, and like I said, I'd like for our roadmen to go out and walk it.
Yeah.
And be sure that it's purpose.
Well, that's what we, that's what we made the developers at Walmart do, we say, you bring them up to speed, you bring the road up to speed, and they weren't, because they were mismanaged and not very good, and I don't think they still have.
No, they have not.
And that's why we declined not to do anything for them. Well, I don't see that that's any different from a regular development, if they could do all that, if they bring it up to speed, and meets our specifications, I don't have a problem with it.
All right, if you don't mind that, I would like to have the public services department go out and inspect the road, maybe proof roll it, just to make sure that these are standards, and then come back to you with a report, maybe at another study session next month.
That makes sense.
If that makes sense.
If the, if the proof road fails, who's gonna do the repairs? Or not? As I'm saying, you can get that truck over there and proof roll it, and it starts pumping asphalt, your, your worst option to work.
That would probably be a good idea, why don't we just do some inspections out there and, without damaging the road? That's all I can figure.
I don't understand proof rolling, a road popping on it either.
No, it would cause problems.
They did that very seldom, I stopped.
It looks to me like, boy, you have twenty-six residents over there right now, two phases.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Arnold, may I address the board, please?
Yes, sir.
May I address the board? Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Arnold, for meeting with us today, and thank you, Waldron. My name is Joe Waldron, W-A-L-D-R-O-N, and I'm a vice president with Alo Property Management, and we're the agents for this subdivision, Brookside Village. About a month and a half ago, we met with Mr. Herman and his associate, Mr. Seagus, they were extremely helpful to us, and all we're here for this evening is to find out some answers to questions. Up until earlier this year, we were a community of twenty-two units. Most recently, as Mr. Herman stated, Mr. Brad Edwards built two new buildings, and that brought in four new homeowners into the community, so we're now up to twenty-six. As you can understand, we don't have any source of income when you have twenty-two to twenty-six people, it's very difficult to get anything done, when in fact, we have to maintain the lawn, we have to maintain the roofs, we have numerous different areas that we have to provide for. I'm here this evening with three of our board members, and again, our concern is, our records show that, yes, there was a bond that was taken out, that it was allowed to be dropped, it ranged anywhere between forty and sixty thousand dollars, and when we met with Mr. Herman, there was no record of the amount, and that's one of the reasons why the board authorized me to in fact submit a FOIA, a Freedom of Information Act request. And what we're trying to do is determine what has transpired over the years. The concern that we have as an association is, when Mr. Edwards did the work, he came in two days before he started the project, put up a sign in the community, and said, "We will be constructing two new buildings on two vacant lots." He did so, he provided us with two beautiful buildings, but never once was the association consulted, we have an architecture review committee, that any kind of improvement to the exterior of the property has to be reviewed by the architectural review committee.
Well, let me, let me stop you for a minute, sir. It appears to me that you guys have an issue with your HOA.
Right.
If, if you're over there, and you've got twenty-four residents, and you're maintaining roofs and you're mowing lawns, that's a money losing deal right there. You're never gonna break it.
I'm getting to that.
I've already got to it, it ain't gonna happen. And, and I would welcome anybody coming in there and building me two nice buildings, as you said yourself...
Yes, sir.
To help spread that cost a little bit further.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I would be complaining about that right now.
I haven't complained.
But I'm telling you, and I'm asking you, if you're gonna maintain the roofs and you're gonna mow the lawns, you're gonna lose your can.
And again, what sense has happened is, when Mr. Edwards came in, I need to know, or the board has asked me to inquire, and again, we're doing this, not as griping, we're just looking for information. And the concern is, when Mr. Edwards did this work, he turned around and he said, "I'll go fifty-fifty with you on the paving, the final code."
Excuse me, sir, but we're not gonna be an arbiter for that problem. We're not, we're not judges, we're not attorneys, we're not lawyers, we represent the people, we're part-time employees, we do the best we can to serve our people the best way we can, and one way for us to serve is not get involved in a private, personal, litigated set of circumstances. And thank, I appreciate your interest, but I'm, there's no sense in you laboring on with something we can't help you with.
I'm not asking for litigation.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't mean that, I'm saying you're asking for, what I'm saying is, we're not interested in participating in the disagreement.
If I could just say two other sentences and...
Oh, you can say whatever you like.
Yeah, two more sentences, we'll hear what you say.
Again, when Mr. Edwards approached the city, was he asked to take out a surety bond to do those two buildings?
No builders have to take out a bond to build a residential unit, ever.
Not the residential unit, but to finish off the infrastructure?
No.
The roads?
No.
The streetlights, irrigation?
No.
We're not the developer.
We're not the developer.
I didn't ask if you were the developer.
Oh, I'm telling you, we're gonna do it.
The developer went to the city, he got permission by the city before he did this work.
He got two building permits to build two units.
Okay.
It doesn't make us responsibility for his, if he never paid a dime for us.
In my mind, you ought to be grateful if he was willing to do fifty percent of that copy. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where you're coming from right now, but you're not making a very good impression here.
My, my concern, your honor, is, again, if a surety bond was secured back in the beginning...
Why don't you bring us proof of that surety bond? Because, you know, I've got, I've got proof right here that ten years ago, I said, "This will likely never finish." And guess what, we're ten years down the road, and that developer that you're saying that had that surety bond, said, "Oh, yes," that his, his intention was to complete the next phases. That was ten years ago.
Again, I'm not here to disrupt anybody, that's not our purpose. Our purpose is, we're representing the interests of the twenty-six homeowners in that community.
And you're, 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 you're standing there wanting me and my board to do something and charge twelve thousand nine hundred people for twenty-six residents that made a mistake? You know, there's a saying out there, "Buyer beware." You know, there's only twenty-four, and twenty-four of you weren't very aware.
Sure.
And now you're up here telling me what I'm gonna do, and what we done with a builder. We gave a builder two building permits, and that builder came out and said, "I'll pay for fifty percent of your road too," and you're complaining about it.
Your honor, I never said that, I never said that we would complain.
You asked me if we would take out a surety bond.
My question is, Matt Burnett, who's talking about doing Phase Three, that's an additional thirteen units, will there be a surety bond taken out for that infrastructure, for the roads that aren't there presently, for the landscaping, not landscaping, the irrigation, for the light system, the streetlights? Will the city require him to go out and get that?
What difference would it make?
Well, what a surety bond is, it's an insurance policy for the association, that in the event that the developer doesn't complete it...
Your first one didn't work?
I'm sorry?
Your first one didn't work?
I don't know why, because I wasn't here at the time, but if you secure a security bond, that money isn't released back to that developer until the work is completed.
I understand all that, I am a developer, I know how that works.
Hey, and that's all I'm saying.
Well, they're, they're, surety bonds have time, they're, they're a proper period of time, they, you know, they're, you don't, they don't, they're not a forever surety. You buy, it might be for two years, might be annually.
Sure.
So you don't know what, you know how long it was, but whatever, when it expires, it means you quit paying for the coverage.
Again, it's never my intent to bring up anything that's conflicting with the...
Now, I mean, since we, I asked about considering the, the roads, I'll, I'll look to see if possibly, if, if the city does take, make those roads public, and maybe, or if I'm dealing with this, if that was, it may have to be surveyed, or whatever, would that, would that come off the tax roll? They're paying for that common property now, the county?
Well, just the roads, not the common area.
Right. The roads would come out of that, so then their taxes could possibly be reduced, which would even up them even more, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's minimal now, hopefully, that they're paying for the common area, because it has no value, so it plays on the value.
John, you deal with this every day.
I mean, yeah, this is a poorly crafted, I think, agreement with the HOA, and you're asking us to come in and clean it up for you, I think it's, it's not our, not our job, but, um, I don't, I don't exactly... How many of these homeowners are, how many are rentals, and how many are people that actually...
Right now, everybody is a homeowner, there's no rentals, but that's not to say that in the immediate future, there may be renters.
Because I start with knowing how to bail out somebody that owns, you know, twenty units.
Yeah, I mean, what, you have to understand, when, when I got involved in it, of course, it wasn't until years after that, you had that meeting with the bond and everything else, but, you know, well, you know, they went through a really rough time, and all they have is Phase Two done, most of it done, pretty much. It was like, when Matt, you know, when the church bought the property, Matt bought the property, and Matt said he was willing to help, it was like, we were, they were thankful, you know, now we're gonna be able to pick up some more homeowners to help share the cost of our, our fees and stuff.
Well, and how long, the intent was for them to pay, to keep these roads up, right?
Yes.
And so, I mean, I don't know, are they not charging enough, you know, HOA fees, or, or...
You can't, you can't charge, I agree, you have to know.
No, yeah, but it's, so it was doomed from the, from the beginning, yeah.
To my understanding, the roads were never private roads, a private road would be a gated community, you know?
No, that's not true, no, no, that's not true.
These are public roads.
No, this, this, when they, when they flagged this, it was a private road, they flagged it to be that way. It was, it wasn't meant to be a public road.
They asked for them to be private, because we got our fire department involved as to whether or not they could put up a gate, what kind of gates they would have to put up. These roads were asked to be private. And if I'm not mistaken, it was one of, it was the first development in this city that had private streets.
It would've been, before Ken's agreement.
Fire, board?
So we, we do, we do look into taking the existing roads in, for Phase Three, are we gonna consider that a new development, and you have to bond every road?
Yes.
Everything of it has to be bonded, see?
I'm asking, looking, see just over there, Matt?
Yeah, I think, fully emailed, I think we, we pulled a series of...
Thank you.
I was trying to find it on the phone, we pulled a series of emails about the first phase and what we did with the bond, so I'll pull that information, and to have it for when we proof roll, when we look at the, do the inspection, so I'll have the emails of what happened with the bond.
Have you had any conversations with Matt recently about Phase Three?
No.
Last I heard, he had to renew his White House utility district water connections or something he had to do, something he had to do over there with his.
But I can, I can assure you folks, if there is a bond issued for Phase Three, it will not benefit you guys, it will benefit us.
What about the taxes, Jerry, you mentioned there's some three thousand dollars, something taxes never been paid?
That's correct, yeah.
We're gonna, if you consider this, that ought to be fixed.
Could I address the board just one more time?
I don't know what you said.
Well, I, I would have to go back and look and see how it worked with Robertson County when they took over, if it wiped out the taxes, but, you know, we still have some lawsuits to file for a couple of years, so, I mean, we can still collect a little bit of that, but it's, you know, I don't, I don't know that we, what we can flag on that.
Yeah, I mean, whether we've got legal teeth or not, it'd still be the right thing to do for, you know, to make, you know what I mean, whatever.
Yeah, Danny, tell me.
Maybe we can do that in years.
Right, I mean, but technically, I mean, but it's very, it's not something, we kind of looked into trying to deal with this, and there is not, we don't have a lot of leeway, because we have to treat every taxpayer the same, so, so we don't have a lot of leeway in it.
Tried to kick that around, tried to figure out if there's any way we could get around it, we couldn't, and I'm not sure how the county, what they decided, but my understanding, they've worked it out with the county. Well, we can check on the, we can check on the road, we can report back to you, and discuss that, and we can maybe have some conversations with Matt Burnett to see what his intentions are, maybe I want to just sell, I don't know what he's gonna do.
Somebody else they want to talk about?
Mr. Cooper?
I've got old since I was here, but, actually, the picture that was put together there isn't quite accurate, and I know it's because it's so many years afterwards, but Mr. Larry Patana was the developer of Phase One, which actually got done after Phase Two, and he, he mentioned about there wasn't much there, infrastructure-wise, well, it was a lot there, because Mr. Patana did all the storm drainage work, he had curbs and gutters put in, he, he put those in, he put, and the first coat of paving, so he did a lot of work, but then there's, he still had a bond up for another...
I keep hearing about this bond, but nobody's shown it to me.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll go to him, because I know they've got it in the records.
But at any rate, Mr. Cooper...
Let me ask you that one.
At any rate, we pulled what was left of that bond.
There was a bond you had that you, you let expire.
And, and we went in, and Mr. Patana didn't do all the stuff your sandwich Patana did, because we did a lot, we did a lot of it, and there was, there were street lights and things laying out there at the barn that we took and put up.
But the, the roads were all put in by Mr. Patana in the storm drainage.
The base of the road expired quite a bit, and I think, I'm not sure about the curbs, because Matt told me he put the curbs in. They may have had it done replaced, they may have broken up or something.
Well, somebody broke them up afterwards, but I just want the picture to be accurate, I, I would hope he would want to have an accurate picture of it, and I don't want to claim more than was done, but I, on his sake, I would appreciate that he would be given credit for what he did do, and he did put this other bond up, and whoever was in planning the codes at that time did not call that bond and let it expire.
Well, it's right here, I'll, I'll read it to you. The staff stated that in January 2011, the commission approved a bond extension of forty-five thousand dollars, but the bank would not increase the amount. The staff stated the two bonds...
The staff stated the two bonds will expire this week. The staff stated the bond amounts are ten thousand dollars for site improvements, fourteen thousand one hundred for Wilkinson Lane improvements. The staff discussed the remaining items, not completed, our drainage culvert detention pond, a section of the walking trail has not been paved, the deck of the streetlight bases have not been poured, section of sidewalks, some landscaping in the back. The staff stated a section of berm has not been completed.
Was that Phase Two, though?
Staff, I'm just telling you what was in two thousand eleven. The staff stated the cost of these improvements would exceed the bond amount. The staff stated some, that some of the work could be completed by some of the city's departments. The staff stated the contract, the remaining work out, would be estimated at twenty thousand dollars. Chairpersonnelers stated the city has extended the bond for this development three times for work to be done at various aspects. Chairpersonnelers stated that the owners of Brookside deserve closure and purchased homes with expectations that all work would be done in a timely fashion by the developers, or the city would step in and complete, fix the problems. Mr. Patana, developer for Brookside, stated that he didn't understand why he should, he should change the sediment ponds into retention ponds when he has two more sections of development to complete. Mayor Arnold stated that there is not a guarantee that those two sections will be completed in the future when this first phase has not been completed. Mr. Patana stated that his intention is to complete the next phases. Mayor Arnold discussed the length of time it has taken Mr. Patana to complete items for over a year and, for over a year ago. Mr. Patana discussed the issue with dirt pile on Northridge Church's property causing drainage problems. Mayor Arnold stated that Mr. Patana was having any extra runoff onto his property from the church that he'd actually be notified. Mr. Joel Cooper, developer for Brookside, stated that when the developer was engineered and working with the city, they did not require this to be a detention pond. Mayor Arnold stated that the city has to look at protecting adjacent property owners that this development cannot get completed, and the sediment pond will not do that. Mr. Cooper stated that they could complete the sidewalks, the streetlights, and the walking trail. Mr. Cooper stated that he would like to receive from the staff a definite list that both agree, honor, the city can take the, the bond. The commission asked the city attorney, David Eminett, for his comments, and Mr. Eminett advised the city to take the bond.
And thought that is not the bond we're talking about here, that was for Phase Two that was done first. We're not, we're on to Phase One here that there was a bond put up yet, because it, it hadn't even been started when you, that discussion, you, you...
We're not gonna argue about, about timelines. If you can bring me a bond that was full, I'd be glad to talk to you about it.
What, what, what is...
But, but you guys are basically here asking for our help. And, and you're not going about it the right way. You're telling me what a great job Mr. Patana did. Mr. Patana left these people holding a bag.
I, I'm not trying to defend that...
You just did that, and I'm telling you...
Well, I'm, I'm trying to just be accurate in what actually happened. And what I heard, you were talking about Phase Two getting finished up, and we're here about Phase One getting finished up, really?
Phase One is finished, is it correct?
Well, yeah, but there was a bond that was...
No, there was no bond.
I'll bring, I'll bring you a copy of it.
You bring us a copy of it.
And the city was even notifying that it was gonna expire.
Well, this, this tells me right here that if there was a bond extension for forty-five thousand dollars and the bank wouldn't approve it, there was some issues ten years ago.
Well, they might have not approved an extension, but it was still in effect, you could have called it. You called the ten thousand dollar one, so you could have called that one, and the bank would have...
It was not for four, we did call it, it was for ten thousand dollars and fourteen thousand one hundred dollars.
That's an earlier bond that you're reading.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue with you, Mr. Cooper.
No.
We, we came here to try to help you folks. We thought that's what you wanted. But I swear, I've never had anybody ask me for help in this matter. So, would you please sit down? Please sit down.
With the bond that was called...
Please sit down, Mr. Cooper, we're done.
That's being very unfair.
No, you sit down. I didn't even have to allow you to speak, and I did.
Well, okay, it's showing you being very unfair.
Any other discussion?
Uh, not in that, but I do have another, I have a new business we don't mind.
All right.
Okay. Uh, in front of you, I, I placed a, uh, a rendering of what the new recreation center would be like. I kind of tried to figure, but the, uh, staff has worked with leader services board, um, and got other community input, the community surveys, and, um, looking at a rec center. We thought maybe I would build a big picture, but, uh, tonight on, on your agenda, at, at your seven o'clock board meeting, I, I'm asking that we do a change order addendum to the current contract I have with HFR Wolf to draw up the demolition plans for this current building, to make sure the gymnasium is still stable, and then to, uh, design the new gymnasium. So that's what I have on the, I have a change order for you for tonight, to allow me to enter an agreement for that. But I, what I wanted to do was show you what, what we're looking at so far on this facility, which would be built just to the south of the new, current gymnasium, a part of the park. But, uh, to get there, there's some things we have to do first, but just to look at, we're looking at, I don't know if you want to help me with this, but, why don't you walk me through what you're planning on doing with this? What, what are you gonna be doing, first floor, second floor, type of thing? If you don't mind coming up here and just kind of run through a wide, type of things you were looking at.
Stand here?
Yes.
Come up here close here.
Come up here closer where we can hear you.
Yeah, okay, I'll do my best. Uh, so on the first floor, um, it's basically gonna be one big gym, I guess you could say, but it's gonna have like a one full court, uh, like a college-sized court, and then it'll have, you know, they'll have lines out there for two courts to go side by side, and you'll have a curtain that'll come down in between them, to where you could have two games going on at one time. It'll have six goals all the way around, so you could technically have, you know, six practices going on at one time. It'll also have two volleyball courts, uh, out there for that. Um, then it'll have locker rooms that could be, that could serve for the, the gymnasium, and also, we've got a wellness center in here, which will have treadmills, ellipticals, uh, bikes, free weights, everything you could think of in a, a wellness center, so, um, and of course, a lot of storage, um, break room for the staff, and then another big feature in the, uh, on the first floor is the game room, it's kind of in the northwest corner, uh, which one section of it would be just like pool tables and arcade and ping pong tables, uh, your traditional stuff, and then there's some two separate rooms that'll be for like gamers, like, you know, esports or, uh, because that's a big thing coming up in recreation, so, uh, we wanted to give that a shot. Uh, on the second floor, um, just around the gymnasium, uh, is a walking track, um, also on the side there, there's, uh, it was gonna be that area where the wellness center is, you know, originally, we wanted to put like a rock wall there, but kind of decided against that, uh, for a lot of different reasons, and so we made it into a wellness center, so that kind of allowed us to have a, a second floor to do something else with, so we decided to kind of make like an auxiliary-type gym. And so there's enough space for us to have like a half court, uh, and also, there'll be some lines out there to have a, a couple of pickleball courts. Uh, I'm also gonna ask them to see if there's enough room to maybe put another volleyball court up there as well, uh, just, but it'll be, it'll have some different flooring on it, uh, so it can be used for multiple things, like, you know, if we wanted to have like inline skating or, uh, something like that, so, uh, it'll be multi-use. Um, we'll also have a lot of meeting rooms, um, still trying to figure out exactly what we want to do with that, because I know a couple of spaces I'd like to turn into like exercise rooms that would have hardwood flooring and stuff like that, so, so maybe those multipurpose rooms would actually be turned into like, you know, exercise studios or something like that. Um, the only other big thing to notice is the kids camp, that's kind of like a, sort of like a daycare or something, where if parents are coming for, you know, watch their kids play, or if they're coming to workout or something like that, that's somewhere they could take their kids while they do all that. Um, and that's...
Yeah, I think the next few pages, and I, I don't know if you've colored photos or not, maybe you do, uh, you're packing, I think you do, shows you what it's, what a possible game room would kind of look like, and gives you a bit more blown-up look at it, um, so, I mean, there's a lot of input about what this game room is, allowing all kinds of variations from arcades to electrician stuff. And then, um, it just shows you what the wormy kitchen concession stand would be like, and treadmills, that was, I think, all the ridiculous, I think when we had our budget retreat, you were asked about a wellness center type thing being added, and I think this was a great idea. Uh, at first, I didn't really want us to compete with the private sector, but I thought this is gonna turn out to be really nice for the public to be able to have access to it in our city, uh, like a wellness center. Put free weights in another room by itself, as you can see, uh, for free weight...
Jerry, this is God. You've packed so many uses into this building. I've never said anything like this.
Yeah, pickleball, it's like, wow, they got pickleball courts, I, I, I've never even seen pickleball yet, but I hear it's a, it's a sport that's really coming on, really strong, and people are looking at it.
If I'm not mistaken, this is gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of people in here, I mean, and if I'm not mistaken, you're gonna hire some people to shoot the light?
Yes. We'll have to have a lot of staff, that's for sure, so...
I, I know I brought a bigger plan, this, this has already kind of been modified a little bit, but, yeah, we'll be, if you guys want to come up here, kind of look at this, but this, to kind of give you an idea of what, uh, the groundwork is gonna look like as we go through the phases, I think this is... This is what I'm asking you to do tonight, is basically, uh, start out with the designing of Phase One demolition, which is pretty much where we're at right now, the hallway, down to the planning. Uh, then obviously, we're gonna have to do something with the, um, with the gym doors that we have going here, the window that'd be exterior, and they've already had, we already had, uh, engineers in here taking a look at the, our fire suppression system, uh, with the sprinkler system, looking at how they're gonna, you know, what, how they need to get the electrical working only just in the gym as this comes down. Uh, so they're putting their demolition plan together already, which is great, and then, um, and then, of course, the, there will be a new, oh, I think, we'll show you. Yes, uh, to start us out with, when, once they do the demo, we're gonna have them build a, um, a fifty-space parking lot, right where we're, where we're standing now, to defeat into the current gymnasium, and that'll, uh, allow us to continue to keep this gym active for about the two-year period that it would take to, to finish the design work and, and to build a new, uh, recreation center. So we definitely need to keep this going, we can't shut this down. I know the architects asked about, can we just tear it down, and I'm like, we, I don't, Kevin and I agree, we just can't go two years without a gymnasium. So it's, it's, because it's active all day long, there are kids in here all day long, or seniors in the morning, in the afternoon, it's teenagers and adults, and then you got the rec programs all evening, every evening, so... And then, of course, you know, the facility is what we just showed you on a, kind of a bigger plan, but, uh, had similar look, just a few modifications to it, but in a larger scale. The walking trail, I think is gonna be, uh, we're gonna get that, that would get used all the time. I think the current, the way it's set up now is about eleven laps for a mile.
Yeah, that's right.
And then, when they build the new rec center under the, on the hillside, going down into the parking lot here, uh, the gymnasium stay, but then once, once we get to that, we'll tear down the gym, the current gymnasium, they'll expand the parking lot to be a total of ninety-three, uh, spaces there, so... And then we're also gonna have a receiving dock, uh, this is one of Derek's ideas, that we be able to have, because right now, when trucks come to make deliveries, there's nowhere really a place for them to go. They designed it so that they can back a truck in here into a loading dock, and then we can take stuff out, like those treadmills and things that we're getting from the recreation department. So, Spring Street, they would just back up like this in here, and then be able to go in the receiving area. So that's what they're designing it to do, I think it's a, and of course, there's elevations, if you want to see what, the elevation would match the current library and the current city building, which would really tie the whole campus together and make it all, look like it all belong to each other.
It looks good.
Yeah, so this is, they would use the same type of brick and glass, a glasswork to do all that, so I think those are really nice-looking elevations, and that's pretty much it, so... I just wanted you all to see that before you had to make that decision, to allow me to have that addendum tonight, I added to the, uh, little...
Very interesting. Two hours of racing, I won't be able to wait for you. It's everybody else. This is, uh, this is a nineteen thirty-five building, this building here. It's, it's served us until nineteen seventy-six. It's the only, only high school in, and, and people come out of the school, well-educated people. We had, we had kids go to Van Veld, we had kids go to Mississippi State, uh, Tennessee Tech, Western, all the universities playing football, uh-huh, out of this one school. Wow, we had a man, a farm boy from Highway Twenty-Five, a Lambeth boy, that was tired farming, and he said he wanted to do something different.
Okay.
And so he went and got his degree in mathematics, with a good foundation he got here, at Tennessee Tech, went to work for the government. And there, maybe, in the aviation industry for the government, later on, became the chief CEO for Lockheed Martin. Uh, there's people like that come out of this little, this school, wow, people got educated, because out there at the facility.
And then yours cleared, yeah.
I skipped work talk there in the office.
Well, we're, we're working on a plan, and I know that, uh, you know, I want to have a, like a, I don't want to call it a homecoming, but we, we do want to have an opportunity for people to be able to come here, and Derek's been kicking around some ideas and sharing with me some, some thoughts that he's had on it, him and Betsy and, uh, and Mandy, and so, we're gonna do something, allow people to come in here and get pictures and things of that nature before this building is demolished. The last goodbye, because you have to remember, I, one of those history blocks we got there, I was looking at, it said nineteen eighty-nine, when the city purchased this, this land with this building, the intent for the school was to tear it down, before the city bought it, so it was, it lasted another thirty years, thirty-two years, so it did good.
You know what, you know what, we had a big argument here in the city. I was, I was sitting on the planning commission, and I knew the guys that were doing the auction, and the time elapsed, and Bill Hobbs says, he was good at this. He said, "You know so-and-so, don't you?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "How about it?" He said, "I thought it was a good friend." He said, "See if we can get an extension on that, and we'll see if we can buy it, we'll, we'll just buy it, and we just change all of them, and we're all very able, guys, just buy it." We went and got him to do that, they gave us a, they gave us a few weeks, and they bought this place and seven acres of ground for two hundred thousand dollars. What a bargain.
Yeah, it's worked out really well, the value of the land is a lot more than that right now.
But what we got on it, yeah.
Yeah, and, so anyways, I just, I'm, I'm really excited about this, I know Kevin's put a lot of work into it, and, uh, and his staff, and the leadership support, so I'm really excited that they're bringing this to fruition. Something that the community's been asking for for quite a long time.
That is it? We will adjourn this one, and we will reconvene in thirteen minutes.